Good morning, everybody. Sorry about that. Good morning, everybody. Glad everybody's here. It's great to see friendly faces out in the crowd. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Clerk Berger, call the roll, please.
Master Combs?
Here.
Master Berger?
Here.
Master Tudor?
Here.
Master Buckin?
Present.
Judge Taylor?
Here. At this time, my pastor, Brother Bill Fort, is going to lead us in a word of prayer. Thank you.
Could you pray with me? God, we thank you for this day. We recognize that it's not just a gift, but it's an opportunity. And so, we pray that we're going to experience this day to its fullness because we also recognize that we can't get it back. God, we also thank you for the opportunity to be part of community. The Bible reminds us that we're stronger together than we are individually. We thank you for these that serve the public, and the call to public service is not an easy one. And we pray that you would give them strength and wisdom and depth of insight and that you give them a vision far greater than they would have if they were not called to do this. And for those of us that they serve, we pray that we would be affirming and encouraging and that we would be in constant prayer for them and the decisions that they make. And God, it is with gratitude that we experience this day, and it is with gratitude that we embrace this life. Thank you, oh God. Amen.
Amen. At this time, everybody please stand for the pledge. Sheriff?
For our flag, face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes.
At this time, we need to approve the minutes from the previous fiscal court meeting. Need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Moving on. Yes, yes, sorry. I'll slow down, I promise. The treasurer report will be at the fourth or at our next scheduled fiscal court meeting. At this time, I'd like to amend the agenda. Permission of the court for Wes Williams. He actually has a check presentation and a resolution 1504 state road stabilization funding.
So move. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
The next thing is a construction notice. We really want to get the information out to the community. The Texas Eastern Gas Pipeline Company is actually upgrading the gas line that runs through the Whitehall Park, which is out off the, at the historic State Shrine. And I really want to make sure that everybody understands that the State Shrine is not going to be closed. It is just our county Whitehall Community Park there where the lake is, and it's going to be closed for pretty much the whole summer. Right now, it's looking, it's going to start March the first, and it is going to go through October 31st. They are having to upgrade those gas lines that run through that park. It's out of the county's control, and so, we've got signage that's getting ready to come up. We're actually going to have it on our website. We're going to have some information in the paper on our cable channel through Chris Israel or IT Department. But anybody that y'all talk to, we do have other parks. You know, we have Union City, we have Cursel, we have Battlefield. So, anybody in the community that likes to have a park, have a birthday, or whatever, they can still contact Phillip to schedule that there. But we just want to get the word out that that park is going to be closed for March through October. Okay?
Sure, absolutely. Go ahead. It's in my district, and I guess to defend the past judge, he had informed me about this last fall, that this probably was coming, but we didn't know when at the time, so we couldn't give a date. On top of that, the judge, the letter judge informed me that he tried to get them to do this in the winter, but they said they just no way. It had to be done during, from the spring to the fall. So, we have no, we have no choice in it. We fought it as long as we could as far as trying to get them to do it, and we want them to do it, but they're not going to do it. So, it's having to close during the best time that you want to be there, but that's just part of it. And be, you know, after they get it done and we get our grass back and everything, the park will be better and improved over what it is now. But just wanted everybody to know that we had no call in this. It's all been.
And it runs right through the lake, and that's why the lake is down. If anybody's been out there and wondering why the lake water, the water level is down so far, that is why we had to drain the lake down so that they can run, or dig up, basically replace the gas line that runs through that part of the body of water. Next is Jimmy Markham. Jimmy, appreciate you being here. He's got some pipeline information, and as soon as you're done, if Wes would like to get up and present to us, it'd be great.
I serve, have served for y'all as one of your representatives at the request of, of the judge, served under the previous administrations, and Judge Taylor's asked me to continue to serve on the Bluegrass Area Development Natural Resource Committee. And this particular project came before that committee initially, I believe in November. And I had talked to Judge Taylor about it earlier, and he asked me to come and present what information had been provided to us at that committee meeting. The project is known as the Utica-Marcelus-Texas Pipeline Project, and Tom has provided a map showing where this pipeline goes across the county. It's an existing pipeline that belongs to Tennessee Gas, and it comes in down in the, between Round Hill and Cottonburg area, goes across the county around the northern edge of Richmond, down through Union City, Doylesville, and goes out into Clark County and Mopping Bend. If you look at the second page there, you'll see a map showing where this pipeline goes across the state of Kentucky. And it comes in down in southwestern Kentucky and Simpson County and goes out of the state up in Greenup County. If you look at the counties there, you can see that Madison County has the second highest number of miles of that particular pipeline of any county that it crosses in the state. This information was presented to the committee, to the natural resource committee there back earlier, and you can see there, and it goes back to 2013, but what this company is trying to do is to, or planning to do, is to repurpose this pipeline. It's currently used to carry natural gas. That's what it's used for now. And they're planning to apply and repurpose it to carry natural gas liquids. It tells on down in here some of the information, but there's, as you put the natural gas liquids, the byproducts, under higher pressure, then you have concerns of safety from the standpoint of soil, water, and air. The natural resources could be affected as the pipeline has changed. Some of the concerns, of course, is whether or not there might be leaks when you change. There's greater pressure with the natural gas liquids than there is with the natural gas. Pipelines were put in prior to 1970, so there's concerns of whether or not those pipelines would fracture, possibly causing leakage. It also talks in here about, you know, some of the other concerns with it as well. So, it does, and as it goes across Madison County, it crosses under every major stream in the county. It crosses under the Kentucky River, leaving Madison County. Of course, we know where our water supply in Madison County comes from. That's upstream from that particular point. It also crosses under every major road in the county, including I-75. And there are at least four or five schools, Kit Carson, around, not too far from Madison Central, Daniel Boone. There are probably four or five schools within fairly close proximity of it. You know, again, I come to you, you know, I serve as your representative, so I just come to you today to make you aware. At the last meeting that was held just a few weeks ago, they felt like that they were probably going to apply to make this change, probably within the next 30 days. Some of the other counties that it's crossed that's in this bluegrass area, I know Boyle County, for example, has had public meetings. I think the fiscal court and the city of Danville had a public meeting and invited folks in. And I believe also there was another county or two in that area as well that's had meetings of folks coming in, so.
Who will have the final decision on this, Jimmy, whether it'll be accepted or not?
Well, it goes, as you look at this, what they're requesting is that it be repurposed and that Kinder Morgan, who is the company that has worked with Tennessee to use this pipeline, applies to the Federal Regulatory Commission for permission to abandon natural gas use. And then, once, if they approve that, then they no longer have, as I understand it, as has been told the committee, they no longer have authority over that pipeline of uses for it. And it would go back to this Morgan-Kinder as to who would be responsible for maintaining and taking care of it and that kind of thing.
Would they have to go through the state to get a permit to redo this?
You know, what is, as I understand from the folks that talk to us, is it's unique because the pipeline is already existing. So unless they go in there and actually replace a section of it, they do not have to have, they do not have to have permits. Division of Water does not have to have, doesn't have to give them permit to cross any of the major streams or river because the pipeline is already there. So, again, that is a, that's a concern because it exists and it's been there since 1970.
Do they have federal guidelines on maintenance of the pipes? Do you know?
You know, going back again to this Federal Regulatory Commission, when they're under their authority, I think they do. Once they come out from under that authority, I'm not sure, you know, who the answer to or, you know, who's going to be overseeing them at that point in time. That's, that is a concern. In Boyle County, when they had the public meeting, I understand they had folks actually from the pipeline there to help answer those kind of questions to help do that. But, again, wanted to make you all aware, certainly, you know, the folks in the county need to be aware of it and be able, if this crosses their land, even if this particular pipeline, and, I mean, if you look at this map and many others, we've got, Madison County has numerous pipelines crossing it many places, but this is the particular one that this is dealing with.
Does Tennessee Gas not need that pipe to transport their gas anymore?
I understand they have more than one. I think they probably have more than one in that same easement that goes across through there.
Like that one that goes through Whitehall? It's got three. Yep.
So, they...
So, more or less, if each county agrees to let them, just quit using that pipeline, they can turn it over to this other company to transport it. Now, will that waste material be going north or south, Jimmy?
I believe it'll be going south in order to transport out down in Louisiana.
Is there any kind of inspection or, you know, these lines make sure they're safe?
Well, it speaks in here of, I mean, of the company, I mean, you know, they've got safety guidelines that they go by, but, again, who oversees that? Once this comes out of, you know, this federal commission is still a question in mind.
Says it was welded with technology that's no longer considered acceptable and is known to fail.
Well, I mean, again, you know, that was 1970, so standards have changed in that period of time, which...
Yeah, I actually, I've been sort of getting pros and cons to this, and I actually asked a gas company employee what his thoughts were on it. And, of course, he said that, you know, this same type of liquid gas is traveling our interstates and on our railways every day. My comment back to him was is that you can see if it's leaking, you know, if it's leaking out of a tank, you know, when it's buried deep in the ground, it's 24 miles long through our county, and it's probably some of this...
Remote areas.
Remote areas, you know, the contours of land is probably not easy access to this, you know, and that's my biggest concern is that, how long, how long could it potentially leak before we even knew about it, or, you know, till it's too late? So, I appreciate you taking the time and serving.
Okay.
Guys, any other questions?
Yes, I just want to ask one more. The upgrade that they're doing out at Whitehall, they are taking those existing pipes and encasing them? Is that what's being done out there?
No, that's not my understanding. They would use the existing pipe as is, is my understanding of what would take place with this project.
His question is what they're doing to upgrade the line out of Whitehall. Would that be the same process that they might need to do to upgrade this line?
That would be one process. Uh-huh. Yeah, that would be one process. I understand they can actually go back inside that existing pipe, and there are two or three different ways that they can upgrade them.
Hold on, let's dig in if we go from the inside.
Right. Right. Okay.
Thank you. At this time, Wes Williams?
I'm representing Madison County Soil Conservation, and we'd like to present you a $7,500 check for the dead animal pickup. We do appreciate your all's support on this program, and we would like to give you this check.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We appreciate your support. Good program.
It is very good.
I'd just like to say, great, Judge, that this is a good program that supplied for the county and the fiscal court has helped in funding the removal truck, and I hope we can continue to do that because it's very vital to the farmers, and not only farmers, there's other aspects of the county that use the removal truck also, get dead animals up off of highways.
And it's also great subdivisions. I mean, you got a subdivision right next to a farm, you know, the kids or families are not having to sit there and watch that dead animal.
Absolutely.
The tear rate, I'll say. Yeah, yeah. So, appreciate you. Thanks, thanks for being here. Next, we have a resolution 1501. It's to adopt a road to county maintenance. This road was actually already adopted by a previous administration. There was wrong terminology, the wrong road name was actually used, and so, we created a resolution just to clean that up. In the minutes of that meeting, it was Derby Lane, but we don't have a Derby Lane in Madison County. It was supposed to have been Durbin Lane. So, this was actually on the agenda last meeting. It's in John's district, and he actually went out and confirmed that the road had been blacktopped.
It's in good shape.
So, this is sort of just cleaning up some old business. And when Durbin Lane was taken into the county road plan, maintenance plan, there was also Taylor's Fork Road that was taken in at the same time. And so, this resolution is to clean up the information that we had from the past. So, I just need a motion and a second.
I'll still move. Second.
Any discussion? Anybody have any questions? Call the roll, please.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. The second resolution is Resolution 1503, and it's a real estate ad valorem payments. It's a resolution regarding real estate ad valorem payment. Whereas the fiscal court of Mass County has been made aware that a question has been raised regarding the taxability of property owned by a private owner, but Mass County leases to East Struck University. And whereas the court, having been made aware that Billy Ackerman, the elected property evaluations administrator, has determined that an application for exemption has not been filed, and whereas without an application of exemption being granted, this property continues to be subject to taxation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the fiscal court of Mass County that the property evaluations administrator's determination that this property is subject to taxation is recognized by the court. Be it further resolved if the court finds that all privately owned property should be found to be subject to taxation. So, this is just the resolution from where we talked about it last meeting. Anybody have any questions? Just need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. The next resolution is where I amended the agenda for today. You know, we all have talked about this in our last conference. We got a lot of information on it. This resolution is 1504, and it's a resolution supporting passage of road stabilization by the 2015 Kentucky General Assembly to ensure adequate funding at the state road fund and county road aid throughout the Commonwealth of Kentucky. It's a concern of all of ours, I know, and I'll speak a little bit on it. If this is not stabilized, we could have a serious decline in revenue into the county to help fix our roads. Over the next two fiscal years, which 2015, 2016, it could be over, a shortfall of over a million dollars. And so, we really need to encourage our legislators to stabilize our road fund. And I would need a motion and a second on this, and then we'll have discussion.
I'll move.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Judge, I'd just like to share some information with the public. I actually talked to Senator Carpenter yesterday, and I talked to Representative Jonathan Schell yesterday about this, and they expressed our concern with it. And I shared with them our numbers that I would like to share here because everybody needs to understand what we're dealing with. In our county budget, we have a blacktop allowance for $700,000. Now, that sounds like a tremendous amount of money, but at the price of blacktop, what that actually correlates to, it takes $53,600 to blacktop 20 feet wide, one mile, one inch thick. So, what we're really talking about here, we have the budget to blacktop 13 miles in Madison County. Now, the problem with that is, is we have 465 miles worth of roads. So, you can imagine what taking a million dollars out of our budget is going to do to us. It just absolutely destroys us. And I shared those concerns with the senator and our representative, and they both understand and they're both concerned, and they, you know, they're both trying as best they can to work with each other, and, you know, this resolution is just to support them. We want to tell them, we support them and we want them to work together, and they're trying to do that very thing right now.
A comment I might too is that there's other fiscal courts, other government agencies across the Commonwealth that are, that are encouraging their legislators, their representatives of their counties to do the same thing. It's definitely something that we've, that we should be concerned about.
Judge, I ended a meeting with CAECO yesterday, and I think as of yesterday morning, there were upwards of 50 counties which passed a similar resolution.
Yep.
Statewide application, of course, it's not just...
Well, a meeting that, you know, we just come out of in Lexington, the three-day meeting, that was the highlight.
That's the topic.
I mean, every room you go in, that's the talk, what we're going to do. And it's not what can we do, but our legislators has to do it. So, yes, I think, you know, we definitely need to send them a pat on the back and a loaded gun.
Yeah.
Sir.
Yep. Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. Next is a few different appointments, and I'll go at them one at a time. First off is the Mass County Planning Commission, and I want to thank David Bohannon. He served a long time on the Planning and Zoning Commission, has done a great, great, great job. And he actually asked to step down, and so, it's my honor to ask the fiscal court's approval to appoint Chris Hager as the representative of Mass County Planning Commission. Just to give you a little history of Chris, Chris is a local businessman. He owns a local Shell gas station there, University Shell, in front of Ace Hardware. He's also has built in the past, had a building business, has poured curbs, has waterproofed, it has a lot of construction, developing background, and I think he'd be a great, great fit for our Planning and Zoning Commission.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are these appointments for particular terms, or are they just...
Oh, they are. I'm glad you said that. He is actually replacing, obviously, David's position, and his term would have been up at the end of this year. So, he'll be sitting, this appointment is to fill that space until the end of the year. Yep. So, his term will be up actually December 30th, 2015.
Is he here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I had never met you. Welcome aboard.
Call the roll, please.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. The next appointment, I ask court's permission to replace this guy from the Mass County Utilities Board. This appointment, I would like to recommend John Thomas, as the appointment and his term would fulfill where John had to step down, this John had to step down. I mean, it'll go through March 30th, 2017. John Thomas is a longtime resident of Madison County. He retired from ag credit, gave a lot of loans out all his life, and is a farmer out on Union City. I mean, he's going to be a great representation of that, of sort of that, I say it from Bobby to Union City area. So, I would ask the court's approval to let him fill the shoes of John Tudor.
I moved to appoint John Thomas's utility board. He's a great ball player, too.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. The next appointment is to, it's sort of cleaning up, it's reappointing somebody that's already actually on the health board. And Dr. Mianke, I want to thank you. I've heard nothing but good things about your service on that health department board. The directors really, really like you being on there, what you bring to the table.
I enjoy serving in Madison County.
Yeah, I know you do. So, it's, I would like court's permission to appoint her to the health board, and her term would end December 31st, 2015. So, it'll be for this year.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Master Buckin?
Yes.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Judge Taylor? Judge Taylor?
Yes. The next one is, it's, I guess it's my appointment, the way the statute reads, and I'm asking the fiscal court for the approval of the salary for our road supervisor. We are very fortunate to have a great road department, have good leadership. The salary would be approval of $60,000 a year. And Willie Willis is who I would like for the court to approve to appoint. Willie's got 19 years of service with our county. He's actually served as a road foreman for road department, too. He brings a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge of our county roads, all over our county.
Judge, you're lucky to have two people that could do that. Normally, you don't have one choice, but you've got to and I think you chose the right one, especially you know what the experience he's got. Willie, every time I've ever called Willie, and I've been here longer than all y'all together, he's always been right there and easy to work with. You never know he's around unless you punch him. But I think he'll do a really good job and I'd like to make that motion.
Great, thank you, Larry. Any discussion, guys?
I'd just like to say, I haven't known Willie that long, but since I've been involved with the county, he's been willing to work with me and very cooperative and seems like he's conscious as of what the county road needs are and I think he'll do a great job in the position.
I've known Willie quite a while. Never seen anybody give him a job yet that he didn't, there was no argument to it or no discussion. He just always does his job and he always will, I can assure you.
I'll go ahead and just echo the same sentiment as John. I haven't had a lot of experience with you, but so far it's been outstanding and we appreciate your support to us.
Go ahead.
Look forward to working with you on daily.
The other thing I'll add is this appointment will go from February, or until February 1st, 2017, just for y'all's knowledge. Okay? Call the roll, please.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Berger?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Bakken?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. All right, now it's time for the judge's report and I'm excited about this one because some of the changes that fiscal court and administration is making is exciting. I want to talk about some job postings that we've actually already started, we've actually already advertised for. And anybody is more than welcome to fill out applications, send in resumes. We're hiring a new human resource director. In the past, Glenna, which is our treasurer, has sort of taken that role of HR. We feel as an administration and a court that it's the best interest of this county to actually have an HR director. And HR protects the employees of the county, it protects us, it allows us to give trainings and educate our employees. And so I'm very excited about that. We actually advertised it in the papers, I think we're online. Anybody that has, anybody interested can send or can get on our website at www.madisoncountyky.us/jobs. Anybody interested in that position. We also, that deadline is February the 18th, too, unless we feel like we need to extend it, obviously. But the next job that we're posted on is the road department administrator. I really feel like that we can better serve this community if we can have a road department administrator, somebody that is managing time of our employees, managing payments, buying, purchasing fuel. And I think he'll bring a lot of efficiency to the road department. So, and that deadline is February the 18th as well. We're also down some firefighters and we're actually posting this coming week, we haven't posted that one yet, we just got this plan yesterday, but we're actually posting for two firefighter positions and that deadline is February the 25th. So anybody that is interested in actually being on the fire department. Our fire department is down and I just have some concerns that we need to get it, you know, get our firemen level back up. Right now, we're at 17 and technically we should be at 24. So I'm excited about that one, too. And I know the firefighters are excited about that, too.
But as you said, it's in the budget that we can hire two of this...
Yes, that's right. Yeah, we've had two that have stepped away.
Or stepped aside.
Yep.
Some bad ones.
Yep, yep.
Judge, when we advertise that, could we maybe put in notations there or something that everybody that does apply, we will keep those applications for future use so we wouldn't have to do that again?
Absolutely.
I mean, that'd save us some money.
Yep.
Should be done.
Yep. That's great. Yep, anybody else?
I'd just like to say, Judge, with talking with all the county firefighters, their main number one thing that they said they needed was more help. And I think this will really help them and make them safe when they have to have two in and two out when they go to fight a structured fire and a lot of times they haven't had that. So if they refuse to go in and fight your structured fires because they don't have backup out, it's a federal law, they have to have two fighters outside while there's two in the building. And this will get our mandate up to where we can meet those standards, I feel like.
Thank you. We also have reached out to the EKU, East Struck University, and we're actually in the process of reaching out to Brea College as well to, they have an intern program and the intern program actually allows them to get class credits. And it actually doesn't cost the county any money to come in and help in different areas of our government, can help the treasurer's office, answering phones in our office, filing, doing mail. And so we're excited about that network and that partnership with both of our universities to network, you know, hand in hand together. So we've actually posted that out, too. And there's different sessions. So, you know, we'll have a spring session, we'll have a summer session. Anybody that has kids that are in college and they're maybe at another university and come home for the summer and are interested in a summer internship, let us know. We would love to have them, so. The next thing on judge's report is inmate accident policy for inmate day labor. In the past, we've sort of gotten lucky that we did not really have coverage on inmates that were working outside the jail. So we found this out and we've actually put a policy in place now that is going to allow us to cover up to 24 workers that were previously not covered. And we've been very, 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 very lucky. We have a lot of inmates that work outside the jail during the day. We have some that work down with Roger and his board down at the ferry. We have some that work with Mr. Scott Tussie at Saw Waste. The city of Richmond has some that work at recycling. And so at the end of the day, if the city's got them, they're still the county's responsibility. And so we've got a policy going now where that's covering any kind of accident that happens to an inmate outside the county jail, it's covered.
Same way with Doug?
I'm sorry?
Same with jail to Doug, I mean, they would be covered also?
Yeah, it's all of Doug's inmates that come out and I want to, it's ones that get out to work, it's not work release. If you're on work release, it's a totally different, different thing. This is actually inmates that have good behavior that can go work.
Well, these inmates are the ones that are, some of these are child support, some of them are classified through Department of Crescent that makes them an LFO, too, outside of work, that, those inmates.
Yep. And each inmate, the insurance policy, it's $174 per year, per inmate. So, which 174 hours a year for, is not a whole lot when an inmate's going down and helping on the ferry, you know, you think of hours that he works, you know, so. But it's something that's protecting the county and it's something we definitely got to have, so. And that's all I've got. Comments from department heads? Does any department heads have anything they'd like to say?
Judge, you asked me to give a report?
Sure, absolutely.
Speaking with Judge Taylor last, after last week, he asked me if I would kind of advise the court of a few things that's going on in our office and that's what I would like to do today if it pleases the court. I'm going to start off with our transports. Just to let you know, right now, as we're speaking, we've got two transports going to LaGrange, to the penitentiary there, drop those off and on the way back, they're going to stop at Frankfurt and pick another one off and bring it back to Doug here at Mass County Detention Center. We also have one on our way right now to Todd County. And then from Todd County, when he comes back, he's going to be stopping in Pulaski County to bring another one back to Madison County Detention Center. And then we have some transports that have to be made this morning so they can be in juvenile court this afternoon. So give you an update, a little bit on that, but for the month of January, we had a total of 23 transports outside Madison County throughout the state. We had one trip to Idaho to bring back a inmate and just within hours of going, after we got airline tickets and everything, we were called through the attorney general's office there that had put a hold on that. So we're in our process now retrieving our money and getting all that back, but that trip will be forthcoming. Let you also know that it's not really a grant, but we've been working with AOC, Administrative Office of the Courts, to better secure the circuit courtroom, the floor there. And that looks like that's going to go, where we have a metal detector out front of the door and that will also allow us, being paid by AOC, to bring on two new court security people just to man that post. So that facility there will be very more safe and secure, so that's good. Now, we'll have family court as well as district court, circuit court with those metal detectors when you come through. Taxes, we're 90% right now where we are from, we still got April, of course, April 15th, but we're collecting almost 96% of all the taxes due this year. And last year, we were right at 45 million, this year we're going to be at 48 million. So everything's looking good. The HADA program is up, going, everything is going good. There's a lot of cases have been made, drug cases have been made through that with, of course, working with Richmond, Berea, state police and our office. It's up and running and doing real good. I called the judge this week and let him know on one particular case of interest, but those guys are working, working hard and our county attorney and Commonwealth attorney, you know, they're playing a big role in assisting those guys with search warrants and those things that they do on a daily basis. Let you know that Willard Reardon, we went ahead and made him our full-time public affairs officer for our office. And what this is going to include is, of course, doing programs, safety programs. We're on Twitter now, we have a Facebook page and, you know, these type things like this, somebody has to man it, keep it updated and we put out people who we have warrants on, drug tip lines, all these type things. And that's helping us get that information on cases that we have outstanding throughout the county, as well as drug information that we can pass on to our drug task force. So that seems to be working real good. Also, starting Friday, we're going to start doing interviews for our hires that we're going to be making, Mass County Sheriff's Department and working with the county judge's office, with Deputy County Judge Executive Colleen Chaney. She's going to be sitting on that board as well as Major Tony Terry, my chief deputy and Captain Slanker of the Kentucky State Police. They're going to form that committee, do their interviews on these people and see if they meet the requirements and the criteria that we need for them to become a Madison County deputy. And that will start Friday and then we'll have another session later on in next week. Our new cruisers, we have four that we purchased, got them in, we've got them at the vendor right now, they're having all the equipment put in. As soon as that gets taken care of, then we'll be bringing them back to the AOC office where the radios will be installed and we'll have those on the road to help cut down some of the expenses on some of the other cars that we need to take off the road. To also let the court know that EKU had a threat this past week. They've asked for our assistance, we've been assisting them as well as Kentucky State Police, Richmond and Berea. We had a meeting yesterday, but last week we started extra patrols on the campus, within the campus. We've had security help them with their, some of the events that they have on campus. There was a Belmont game last week that we had people go to because of the crowd control. Also, Morehead playing tomorrow night, we will have people there as well. So, you know, if you see Madison County cruisers or state police, Richmond or Berea with on the campus, you will know why we're there because of that threat. And, you know, we're not going to take it lightly as the university is not, so we're assisting and I just want to let you all know that. Very excited about working with the court. Our office is up and running, going strong, very busy, especially the weather's brought a lot of accidents, a lot of things like that, but everything's going good. Just let you know.
Back on AOC, are they ever up to pay on those guys that you hire up there? I don't see how you get anybody to work for that.
Well, it's hard, it's hard. That's the reason we had to get an adjustment to fiscal court to pay a little more. But AOC started out in January 3rd, 2011, we come in, they were paying $8 an hour and then it got raised to nine. So, you know, it's hard to ask people to come over. Of course, we have seven full-time and then we have part-time, but it's hard to pay them $9 an hour, so that's the reason we got assistance from you all to, depending on how long some of those folks have been working, where we can pay them a little bit more and get them up there, you know, where they're not too bad. But if they're full-time, they get the benefits and their salary, of course, is not like what it is part-time, but we have to make adjustments on the budget when we do our budget to get the pay up for those.
I'm sure these new officers that you're going to interview or whatever, they will probably be certified, hopefully.
Yes, with, you know, we have several that would love to get in to the law enforcement field, but it's just not feasible at this time to be able to hire somebody, send them up there for months. And then you have, you know, on-the-job training that they go through. So there's a year that we actually are paying them a salary but losing out on. In my eyes, it's better for us, for the county, if we can hire certified people and put them out there and get them trained up, whatever schooling they have to have, put them out there to start serving the needs of the county.
I think me and you, or you and I, served the first 20 weeks in training.
Yeah, actually, I think it was, that was in the early...
Don't say what year.
Ten weeks, I think, ten weeks.
Don't say what year.
State Police Academy, you know, it increased and now it's up into the twenties. But there's a lot of things that goes on. You know, every time we turn around, we have different laws passed. Of course, the computer has brought on a lot of changes across our country, the cell phone and everything. And there's some new laws right now that's going to be coming out. Of course, the heroin law is going to be a big change across our state. You know, even having a cell phone in your hand while you're driving may come in. So a lot of these things that they're talking about, as Mark can tell you, there's going to be some big changes across our state. to be some big changes across our state. But the DUI law, I think, you know, it's, it's under the telescope as well as, as changing. So we've got a lot of things, and it's not so much alcohol now, it's drugs while they're driving that we have to be considering. If there's any questions, be glad to try to answer anything else.
Good report, Matt.
Just a comment, I think I did hear that they, when they stop people, they're stopping them more for the drugs than they are for the alcohol.
Yeah, we've, we've seen our deputies, as well as some of the reports that we get, Richmond Road, Placenta. Just a couple of weeks ago, there was one that still had the band wrapped around him and the needle that was stuck in his arm, and he was still there at the stoplight. You know, there's a lot of, when, when they got the 911 call, so they put that out. We've had accidents, of course, we've had, you know, suicides, a lot of things here in Madison County, overdoses, as well as all the other counties. But the heroin is, is really bringing some serious problems to our community and our families. But, you know, with this task force, with some of the laws that are changing, and, you know, the ability to, that the county attorney's office, Commonwealth attorney, and our courts, you know, I think that we're on the right path.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, buddy.
We are, we're glad, Sheriff, that you all can help out up at Eastern, because, you know, those young men and women, and women that come here, their, their families expect us to do what we can to keep them safe while they're here, and we certainly appreciate that.
Well, we're, we're asked, we try to do whatever we can, and, you know, it's no problem.
Anything else, guys? All right, comments from magistrates?
Yeah, I'd just like to start, we went up to Lexington last week to a conference. And at that conference, of course, you know, I'm, I'm new, and I'm just like a sponge. Every time somebody opens their mouth, I learn something. And we get the opportunity to go up there and, and see how that other judge executives and other magistrates are handling problems and share ideas with them. And we get courses, and we can, and the things that I pick up those, is how we can approve our own policies and the way that we do things day to day. You know, you have to be constantly looking to make things better. And so I really got a lot out of that, and I certainly appreciate the county letting us go to those.
Thanks, Tom.
Just like you said, Tom, I think we learned from good examples and follow some good examples from what other counties are doing. And I'd just like to say, appreciate working with Scott this week. He's worked on some trash problems, issues that we've had out in the county, and we're trying to resolve some of those situations. Today, I think we've made several good appointments to different boards and committees. Appreciate these people being willing to volunteer their time and, and work and serve on these local committees, and that's what helped keep our county and community strong. Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Roger?
A little bit hoarse, I'm not going to talk long, but as of today, the ferry's up and running, and we've had some mechanical problems, even with the new boat, but I hope we've got them straightened out. Just got it back in the water last week, and so far, it's running good. Tom and John, they, they got their first experience with the trainings last week, and Larry and I had spoken up there, sitting beside each other, that we both well-know and have known for years, that you're going to learn more from the guy next to you from another county than, than the instructor will ever tell you. But you still got to listen to the new regulations and laws and whatever's going on and try to keep up with that. And I've been here 12 years, and there's a lot of things that I thought was done this specific way, and then you ask the question, and I say, no, it's not the way it is. You know, sometimes you hear it wrong, you know, and I'm not meaning from another county official, you know, from the people that, that puts on the program sometimes, that those things change. And what they told you two years ago might not be right now, so that's why you need to keep going, because it can change. But I was real impressed with them, and, of course, I think they learned very quick, that you can sit around a table and eat with somebody from a few more counties, and you learn a whole lot. Sometimes you can give them tips on what needs to be done, but I, and I, and I tell them this all the time, I say, well, this certain one from a certain county had this idea that they did with their jail or their road department, you know, and, and it works, you know, there's, there's other heads out there that can help you figure it out. But it was a good thing.
Larry?
Well, I enjoyed it. And, you know, we were sitting there at lunch one day, and you always hear new stuff, and Roger and myself were sitting there, and we heard a jailer say, well, we sure could use a lot more prisoners. We said, how many could you use? He said, we could take 150. I said, we got them. But come find out, he's way down on the other end of the state. Too far off. But we were sure willing to sign a contract right there on the napkin to give them to him, but it didn't work. But you always pick up stuff, and I, and I appreciate all the magistrate, judge being there. I mean, we all learn stuff as we go along. Now, I did learn one thing, we had the Attorney General there, Commissioner Aggencott, and a lot of the up, the ups. But anyway, it's good to hear them disagree on things. You know, one says you can do this, one says you can do this, well, who knows? And that's an issue that they were talking about, that's going to be brought to this court eventually. But let's make it later on, Judge, not now. Everything's not too smooth now, so let's just stay on a positive note. Other than that, just glad to be here. Judge, you're here, buddy.
Just, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm past my turn, but, and I'm going to have to have a little help with this. In the last meeting, we talked just a little bit about the waste management program, and, and I want to just make sure that all our residents know that, that we've got a, a good system there for getting rid of some things. And if you don't mind, just for, if you'll just beg, now, I'd like for Mr. Tussie to come back up just real quickly and just talk about that just for a second. I apologize.
No, that's good.
I think at last court, Magistrate Bach, can you add a question about the large item service requested?
Thank you.
That is a free service from our department. It is available upon request from our residents. It is advertised, it's not on our website, but it can be put up on our website as well. All our permitted trash haulers, if, if their residents or clients have a request that they cannot handle, such as a large item, such as a hot water heater or a basketball goes, you know, it's just some examples. All of our permitted haulers know to refer our cus, their customers to our office for that service. So it's a great thing, and it's here for, here for the residents for us to do.
Yeah, we're, we're glad to hear that. We don't want to see matters and stuff along our side of the road. You guys can help us out, those things, we certainly appreciate it.
And you don't very long, they, they come and get.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Is that all, guys? Any comments from the audience? Anybody in the audience like to get up? Sure. Just come on up to the podium, state your name.
Yes, my name is Robert Aiken. I'm president of the Bluegrass Central Labor Council and the Senate Kentucky Building Trades in Lexington. And I was wanting just a couple of minutes to hand out some information to the magistrates and speak to you about local right-to-work ordinances. I'm sure you've, you've heard about this, or it's going around. May I, may I pass these?
Sure.
And I think that a couple of weeks ago, a similar packet was mailed to the county attorneys, as well as the county judge executive around the state. I've got a couple more back. Yes. Yeah, I got my.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you say that. There you go, one minute, okay. We'll get it to the right place. And you may or may not have heard from, from this, there's a group going around called Protect My Paycheck and the Bluegrass Institute for Public Policy, and they're advocating to many counties around the state the adaption of a local right-to-work ordinance. We're, of course, opposing this, and the main reason is that we feel, as the Attorney General does in his opinion, that it's illegal under state and federal law. Of course, you have, you have a county attorney that's going to advise you on this matter if it ever comes up. I've spoken to many counties around the state, most of them have kind of took a stance of wait and see. And a couple of the issues that's going on with it is that all, all labor law in the United States basically is molded out of the National Labor Relations Act of 1935. And that is a federal law. And with that, and the biggest amendment, I guess the change to it was the 1947 Taft-Hartley Act. And within those laws, it grants states and territories the right to adapt right-to-work law. It grants those states, at that time, when it was done, Alaska and Hawaii were still a territory. Now, it just basically, I guess, covers Guam, Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico, and some other areas that aren't constituted states at this current time. Kentucky has already, this session, passed Senate Bill Number One, which is right-to-work. Senator Carpenter supported that. And that, that law is drafted and, and put out in the mold of the National Labor Relations Act, the spirit and mold of that law. It's, I guess it's somewhere in the House of Representatives, will be voted on here sometime before the session's over. But, but that is what also many opponents of ours that want right-to-work say that's the way to do it. Within the documents you have there, the National Right-to-Work Foundation, which is an old, established group that, that advocates right-to-work nationwide, they say even that this local ordinance mode that the Protect My Paycheck and Bluegrass Institute people are promoting is illegal and won't be upheld in the courts. So a few weeks ago, there's five counties have actually passed this in state this time. Hardin County was enjoined in a lawsuit with the county and some of the officials there by nine different unions and AFL-CIO within federal court in Louisville, Kentucky. Whatever comes of this lawsuit will determine whether, whatever action counties take are legal or illegal. And, you know, we're just kind of suggesting to many counties, they study the issue and maybe just take a stance of wait and see how this lawsuit turns out. So that's just kind of where we're at on this, at this time now. I know I spoke to, I'm speaking to several county, I spoke to Russell County last night. They're, they're not going to do anything with it this time. And several counties, I've spoken to the judges and attorneys, and one of the problems in Kentucky is we just got too many counties and too many meetings to get around to. But we're trying, we're trying just to get out and get a little information out about, about these groups and what they're doing there, and on, on things like that. And just like I say, any questions I can answer, any additional information or thing that anyone needs here, we'll try to provide. I'm sure you'll get, that's one thing you'll always get plenty of, is information, whether you want it or not. And, and that's all I wanted to speak about. Other than I would like to, I know John mentioned earlier about some pipeline working here, and I would like to extend the invitation to the judge, the board, or any county people that you feel involved, to come to the laborers' training center. And they have a pipeline mock-up, and they train people to build and construct pipelines over here at Lawrenceburg. And if you have any interest in that, we'd love for y'all to come over and take a tour of that and show exactly how they're built and how they're put together. And it's a pretty good little tour out there, where you get a lot of understanding about it, and how they're wanting to condemn these lines. We do a lot of pipeline work with these NGLs and stuff, and it's, it's a pretty complex issue. We, we attended the meeting over in Boyle County a few weeks ago, and if anyone liked the information there, I guess we can pass that on, what was given out to our public, or you all, we'd be glad to provide anything on those lines. Appreciate your time. Any questions I can answer?
I think you was reading my mind when I was telling the judge.
Well, that kind of going on. I think the Attorney General spoke on it, too.
Yeah, we had probably a half a day, I guess, totally on the right-to-work, and it's very confusing. And I, I couldn't make a decision on today, and I've spent a half a day.
Well, it's a complex issue. It's not, it's not, it's not simple to get into it, and there's a lot of economic factors if you really consider, you know, Kentucky is really, I mean, we're not where we want to be, but we've done well the last few years compared to the rest of the country in economic development, and, you know, we want to try to continue that. But, but like I say, it's a complex issue, and there's a lot of, a lot of factors, a lot of things involved in it.
Well, I think the judge can tell you the feeling of this court. I mean, we're going, we're not going to be no hurry on this. I don't think, I hope I'm not talking out of school.
We had conflicting reports, we had one governor candidate said that it was something that the local counties could make a decision on, and then we had the other candidate say that it was something that's handed down from the state, that the local had no decision whatsoever on.
I know both those gentlemen well. One of them used to be my state representative, so I, and my kids paid for them. So that's just kind of the crux of the issue, and you, you, you were, I guess, lucky enough to see it right there in person of what's going on. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, anybody else from the audience, best? At this time, I need a motion to pay the claims and prove the transfers?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Pastor Berger?
Yes.
Pastor Tudor?
Yes.
Pastor Bach, and?
Yes.
Pastor Combs?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes. Our next scheduled court meeting is Tuesday, February the 24th, which is here in the fiscal courtroom. But I also want to make mention of a work session that we're going to have to discuss our six-year role plan. I sat in a meeting yesterday with Transportation, and I really want to get the magistrates together, get in on our six-year role plan, coming up what we feel like is the most important things for our county, for our county over the next six years. And that is going to be February the 18th, that is next Wednesday, at 9:30 here in the fiscal courtroom. So next Wednesday, February 18th at 9:30, we'll have a work session, discuss the six-year role plan.
When's our legislative date?
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Yep.
The reception is the 19th.
Okay.
Yep.
Do this close.
And last but not least, thank y'all for being here. I appreciate it. It's great to see smiling faces out in the audience, and we appreciate y'all's support to this county and your service. At this time, I'd like to get a motion, a second, to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Pastor Tudor?
Yes.
Pastor Bach?
Yes.
Pastor Combs?
Yes.
Pastor Berger?
Yes.
Judge Taylor?
Yes.